I'd like to call to order the April 23rd, 2018, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies in which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Semirusti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Here.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Here.
Mr. Roslovich?
Here.
Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act and JSA 10-4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss HIV reports and discipline. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance within JSA 10-4-13. Information regarding the board's closed-session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'm sorry, Scott, did we need to ask personnel to that as well? To the list? No? Okay. Okay, can I get a motion to commute to executive session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to reconvene to public session? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in his love, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, Linda, are there any communications on the agenda other than what's on the agenda?
No, just that.
Okay. And so next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes from the regular public and executive session from March 26th and the public workshop and executive session from April 16th. Did anybody have any concerns, questions about those minutes?
Move second and discuss.
Yes, sorry. Can I get someone to move those minutes?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion about those?
Nope.
Okay. Same none, Linda, can we please have a roll call?
Sure. Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Semirusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslovich?
Yes.
Okay. That brings us to our student report. Do you need a little time to get settled or wait for?
I'm still connecting the Wi-Fi.
Okay, so why don't you, we'll flip it if that's okay with everybody? We'll just flip Dr. Taylor's report and the student report. We'll go with Dr. Taylor's report, give you some time to settle in.
That'd be great.
Okay. Sure, no problem. So we are going to skip to number 10.
Tonight?
You're not on.
Tonight, we are going to spotlight several middle school students and their families and guardians. Mrs. Osemie is here, our middle school principal, to talk a little bit about why all of these wonderful folks are here tonight. And we're going to then present certificates. And at the end, we would love to take a big group picture with the students who are here and then members of the families and guardians. So Mrs. O, would you please take the podium?
Good evening, members of the board, families, students. I am so excited to be here this evening because tonight we get to celebrate some of the best that HPMS has to offer. Let me give you a little background information about why we're honoring the students that we're honoring this evening. We have a partnership with some students from a school from China, which I'm not going to dare to say the name of because I don't want to butcher it, like everyone butchers my last name. And we were looking for some ambassadors to be able to help the students, the visiting students that were coming and show them what it feels like to be a student in a school in Highland Park in the United States and take them around. And I had asked for some volunteers, the guidance counselors put it out there, and these beautiful people that are here ran and jumped at the opportunity. When the visiting students got here, they were so welcoming and warm. They took them everywhere. They showed them a wonderful time here at the school. And they were just examples of what being open and welcome citizens, being a welcoming and open citizen. And it gave those students such ease that by the time they, when they first got here, they were like all in one line and really serious. And by the time that they left and had spent some time with our ambassadors, they were taking selfies and hugging and just so, so happy to have been here. So I know that a lot are going to come back, and that is all because of you and how welcoming and how amicable, how wonderful you were. And it's just, it makes me very proud. So parents, you should be very proud because your students were the leaders and they showed and reflected all of the great things that are happening here at HPMS. So I'm going to call you guys all up. We're going to make a line here. Dr. Taylor's going to hand you your certificates, and then we're going to have an opportunity for some pictures. All in the family here, Lina Shaheen. Gwene F. Gerson. Emil Shawala. Emil's not here, but you want to recognize Emil. I'm going to say Ariana Davis, she's not here, but Ariana Davis. Alexandra Diaz Camacho. Noah's not here, but Noah Flores. Aisha Hussein. Anaya Khalil. Marie Mao. Janaya Mitchell. Jaya Mitchell, all in the family there too. This one's not here. Kamfi Ogina. Miles Peterson. Henry Rosner is here. Michael Somerville, she's not here. And Sean Wang. Last but not least. Congratulations to you all.
He got them right in line. Right in line. So great. I don't know if this is great. It's really well set up there.
Yeah.
We'll find out.
It says the Chinese students. They should do that every year at the high school. It's been, it's been an argument, not an argument, I've been hassled, darcied with her voice, and I think she did it last time. Give them all out. Take the picture, everybody's happy. We're more happy, we're not getting home at 11 o'clock. I know. Don't pull, Scott, don't pull.
I know, she's trying to take steps over on the bench.
And he listened, he listened. Yes, he listened, it's true.
Are the students Chinese students?
No, no. No, no, no.
Yeah, because it's over, it's done.
Yeah. Are these the five, are these the five exchange students or other kids?
That helped them.
No, but who were the Chinese kids that they helped? Were they the five, the five kids that came for a year? No, they were less actually. They got up to five, but...
Oh, and this is all the support they got?
Yeah. They got, I think they, I think they got it up to three and a half, four. But I didn't know that they got all these kids to help. I thought they might have got some other program, I didn't know of that. Yes, yes.
Oh, yes.
And I thought they were older. I thought they were, I thought they were high school kids, the Chinese kids. This is good, this is good.
Yeah, because I'm like... I'm like, wait.
Oh, look at this. See, the whole board should go in these pictures.
Yeah, right away, why are we sitting here? We don't know anything.
I know. You know, we don't even know anything about our group.
That's great.
So, yeah, so, yeah, he has it. Yeah, he likes it. Likes the attention. I'm like, oh, the family is there.
It's great.
But we only have smart people on our board. I'm not kidding.
One more, don't move, don't move, don't move, one more.
No, nobody, nobody. We had Matt Hirsch, who was mostly interested because he's a bar council member, and they have their own problems, he worked for the year. And we had a teacher. Three people.
Andrew, let me take a question.
And three of us. She didn't trust us. I mean, you know, they don't know, I don't know as much as they think I know. I know a lot, but I don't, the person who really knows is... Yeah, but she's very, she's very, she's very good. Gets a question, she answers it.
At this time, parents, guardians who came can leave if they would like to, or they can stay. But now, if you'd like to step out, you're more than welcome to because the meeting is going to continue with something else.
Yeah, it would be nice if a few people did. Nobody, nobody. Scott, stop, Scott. Yeah, tell them they have to stay next time. No, we're kidding.
Good night, everybody, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Bye. Bye.
You're feeling lonely now?
I'm going to continue my presentation and then, oh, good night, Mrs. O, thanks for being here.
Good night, Mrs. O. Safe travels.
And then Julia, we'll come back to you, okay? Okay. So tonight, what I'd like to do is take the opportunity of the tragedy that occurred last week to reflect on lessons learned and also speak to the curriculum we've been rewriting over the last about year and a half. So tonight, I'll talk about K-12 health curriculum with an emphasis on family and sex education. And then, in my last few slides, I'll touch on next steps, how we're going to learn from what happened. First of all, a reminder to those of us who were involved in the strategic planning process that we actually have an action step. We had an action step last year that had us rewriting the K-5 health curriculum. This year, 612 health curriculum, and we are on track to do so. This is the first year of implementation of a new grade's K-5 program, and I'm going to touch on the details in just a second. And currently, we are in the throes of revising our grade 6 to 12 program. And this is a picture of Dr. Nikosia, one of our supervisors of curriculum, spending about an hour and a half on the first day with our middle and high school health teachers, talking about curriculum design. I'll speak to that a little bit more in a slide. Every program in our school district has associated with it a scope and sequence, a layout of the topics that we teach and a sense of when we teach them. If anything, when it comes to more general curriculum that we don't teach on a daily basis, such as the case with health curriculum, because we teach it sporadically throughout the year, at the very least, if we don't pinpoint timelines, we show you the chronology, the layout, the sequence of the topics. On this slide, you see the six units that our health team is implementing this year. At the Irving level, Mr. Luxembourg pushes in, takes 10 to 15 minutes out of his time sporadically to incorporate these units in his program for pre-K K-1. At the Bartle grades, Mr. Royg and Mr. Stark use one of the six additional, what we refer to as swing periods, that occur throughout the year. These are periods that in the past have been used to supplement some of the special subjects. So art may have picked up an extra period in the course of a year, or music, or so on, so on and so forth. The two health teachers and I decided it would be best to use those six periods now just to focus on health. They last for about 45 to 60 minutes each. They happen in the teacher's classroom. The teacher is, in some cases, in the classroom or might use that period to do some, do some work outside the classroom. I think it's helpful if I zero in on really a topic that is most pertinent to what occurred last week, and that's how we are helping our students better understand family planning and, of course, incorporated into that is sexual education. In fifth grade, we launch our grade 5 to 12 sequence of family and sex ed. Mr. Royg is the teacher at Bartle, who spends his time pushing in for at least one of the six periods, since one unit specifically focused on growth and development, talking about puberty and how that relates to physiological development and the kind of changes kids are experiencing before they move on to full puberty. These are four essential questions that frame what Mr. Roy does in his program. By the way, this curriculum can be downloaded from the website by going to the district link, the drop-down menu at the top of the website, hpschools.net, clicking Curriculum and Instruction, and then there's a guide that shows you how to download all of the documents in PDF format. I'll also make this presentation available in the superintendents page, so if anybody wants to pull this down and actually drill deep into the details, they can do so on their own. But you can see that these are the questions that frame the activities, the discussions, and the lesson objectives that are established for this, for this particular unit. Now, in the past, our grade 6 to 12 program was in place, but when I came on board a couple of years ago, one of the first things that I was told about by members of the community, members of the curriculum committee, including the chair, Michelle McFadden, is that we really didn't, nobody ever really, at least recently, codified what we were doing and made sure that there was scaffolding, you know, building of one topic upon the other methodically from grade 6 to 12. So this year, we've set out, according to the timeline of the strategic plan, to doing that. Our teachers, who you saw in the picture a couple of slides ago, for middle and high school, Mr. Scolfanti, Ms. Shimon, Mr. McGlynn, and Ms. Washington, spent three days with me, with a consultant we hired, who is a retired PE and health teacher, Ms. Asamoah, who talked about Team Pep, which I'll touch on a little bit, and Dr. Nikosia. I should go back a step and tell you that last year, when the K-5 team worked with me on the health curriculum, we brought in Lucinda Holt, who is, whose career is wrapped around the topics of family and sex education for children. And we also spent an hour and a half with an organization based in San Francisco called Gender Spectrum, so that we could be incorporating elements of our gender identity protection policy in what we were doing. And I mentioned at some point, if not to the full board, then in committee, that the two Bartle teachers were so excited about that experience that they strongly encouraged me to have us, as a full staff, work with the individual from San Francisco, who's a retired principal and one of the PD trainers for Gender Spectrum. So we're hoping to do that in September. We tried to get it going in February, but the schedules didn't match between us and the person with whom we worked. So, back to the grades, the middle and high school grades. One of the takeaways from the three days that the middle and high school team and I spent together in March was the memorialization of the four units that we're going to address in middle and high school lockstep. The next step is for the teachers to be writing the curriculum, and they're going, they're doing that now. So whereas the three days were spent planning, getting trained, wrapping our heads around the big picture, this scope and sequence chart, between now and June, the middle and high school health teachers are going to actually be writing the curriculum. So that means writing activities, objectives for their lessons, essential questions like those I just listed. The four units we'll focus on are Human Relationships and Sexuality, Wellness, Drugs and Medicine, and Communication. It's the unit one that, again, I want to come back to, how we're addressing family and sex education. This is, right now, on this slide, the sequence of topics that will fall under the category of Human Relationships and Sexuality from grade 6 to 12. Take a look at that for a second. These are just the broad topics. Of course, under each topic will come activities, objectives, a series of days will be spent focusing on these topics. The one grade in which we have not, right now, planned to address family and sex education is 10th grade, because during that slot, we teach the students driver's education. We're reflecting on how we might still be able to fit in something, the scaffold, what we do in grade nine. Shift gears a little bit. One of the things we did when we met as a middle and high school health curriculum writing team is speak with Elizabeth Asamoah, Teen Center director, for a couple of hours to talk about Team Pep. She made sure that everybody was aware of the program. Some of our, our middle school team was not aware of Team Pep because much of what we did in the past happened at the high school level. So, so those two teachers were oriented to the program, which is essentially teaching about family planning and sex education peer-to-peer, training juniors and seniors students, high school students, to turn to their peers during the time that they would normally have health class, instead of having the teacher teach the program. And in some cases, the teachers even step out while a coordinator for the Team Pep program steps in to provide some confidentiality and maybe a safer environment for some of the students who might not be open in front of their teachers. The Team Pep program is funded by the New Jersey Department of Health. They provide grants for everything from training to the curriculum. We, until this afternoon, we were shut out of this next round of training, which would have started taking place over the summer, so we could launch 2018, 2019. And our plan was going to be to supplement the curriculum with some materials that the Teen Center uses sometimes when it's counseling in small groups or one-to-one, including Our Whole Lives, Advocates for Youth, and materials that come out of ETR. But at about 3 o'clock, I got a wonderful text from Elizabeth Asamoah that through divine intervention or some other sort, the Department of Health got back to her to say that, in fact, they may have received additional funding to allow for another school to come on board. So we are likely going to, in fact, be able to incorporate Team Pep into the program 2018, 2019. Ms. Coleman, who's the social worker for the Teen Center, would be the coordinator, and the Team Pep program would be wrapped into Mr. Scolfanti's health classes. So there would be some training for the teacher, training for the Teen Center social worker, again, even though Ms. Holman has been trained before because we did run Team Pep in the past, and, of course, training for the students that we would select. Speaking of the students, I thought it would be pertinent to tie something together that we've been exploring for at least a year. Came to my attention from one of our residents, Catherine Burton, who works with an organization called Sources of Strength, to implement programs called Sources for Strength. The reason why I'm coming back to, certainly back to Sources of Strength now is because I feel like this is a program that will supplement our work we're doing with teens in the area of family planning and sex education. The skinny version, besides sharing what I am here on the slide about this program, is Sources of Strength has peers identified in peer groups, cliques, that have been singled out by teachers, by adults in the building. These are kids who aren't necessarily the popular kids, you know, or the formal student leaders who've been chosen for programs like the Ambassador Program, like we just saw, but rather students who are acknowledged informal leaders among their peers in certain peer groups or cliques. These students are recruited, they're selected, they're trained by folks from Sources of Strength to be the go-to peers their friends can rely on if they're in crisis, if they need help, but they don't feel comfortable coming, going to an adult, if they don't know who to go to, but because they're always, most often, in their circle of friends, can go to if they need help regarding everything from how to confront feelings of suicide ideation, ideation, or what to do in case a child does become pregnant and has questions and doesn't know how to grapple with this, with this change. Sources of Strength are literally the kids, they are the sources of strength, who can help their peers through some of these crises. They don't, they're not trained to be counselors, but they're trained to know all the resources that they can connect their friends to in the community. We are on schedule, finally, to launch in 2018, 19, the Sources of Strength program. This is incorporated in our strategic plan as well. The teachers involved will be trained May 24th and 25th. We're going to start recruiting kids in about a week or two. And, coming back to Ms. Holman, who's quite busy, she'll be the coordinator for the program. But this is Ms. Holman's role. She's, she's not a licensed clinical social worker, so she doesn't do the brunt of the counseling, but she is the liaison with the community, the diversity dinner, a lot of the events we do at night. There are thanks to Ms. Holman, so she's the perfect person to be a coordinator for this, for Sources of Strength. I do want to conclude my presentation by reflecting on what we have been, as a faculty, a board, in general, a community grappling with. I'm not going to go over the details of the event. I will say that obviously what happened last week has touched all of us deeply. And while we felt we reacted appropriately, we feel we also need to do a debrief as a group a few weeks after the event where we're in a better emotional place. We're going to do that this Monday morning at 9:30 in my conference room. The leadership team, which includes all of our supervisors, principals, me, the director, even Ms. Holfler, and the Teen Center staff, will come together to meet with the director of the New Jersey Traumatic Loss Coalition to talk about what, what we did to react, how we may have done things differently, how maybe we, what we did was appropriate. So I'll report back to the board if anything comes about that I think really needs to be shared. We'll also codify whatever we come away with on Monday in our crisis plan. We actually have a very detailed crisis plan that, we haven't shared with the public because it is a plan that includes sensitive information, that, and the end, at the back in the appendices, includes protocols for handling loss. God forbid somebody in our community, close, close to us, passes away. We have a chain that we activate. We, we know who to go to. We have procedures to... We have procedures to, for instance, bring together staff first thing in the morning and the next morning. We're going to have to do the same thing for the type of incident that occurred last week. Anomaly as it may be, rare as it may be, it's still something we have to account for. And I also did hear from residents who had valid concerns about the reality that we're not teaching about the Safe Haven Infant Act, and we're going to make sure that we incorporate that into our curriculum from this point forward. I mean, the timing for me to have gotten input about the Safe Haven Act is appropriate in that we're currently writing our middle and high school curriculum. So we'll be sure to codify that as well. So, that concludes my program highlight. Are there any questions, concerns, thoughts?
I have a question about the, I know that last week at the meeting, you mentioned that teen center staff were being mobilized in the event of last week's, you know, what happened, and I just was wondering if, like, to what extent there was presence from the administrators, like, from faculty or whatever talking about this in the schools, you know?
To what extent?
Yeah, to what extent it was discussed, to what extent kids were prompted to talk about it, if people knew whether it was being, you know? I didn't have any teacher bring it up to me in a formal way. I only talked about it with two teachers who I'm close to, you know, and kind of like in a very informal discussion. So I was just curious how the, whatever was mentioned last week kind of factored into that.
So, the night that this incident happened, there was a flurry of emails, texts, it was actually a board meeting night, and if you saw me on my computer, that's what I was doing, if I seemed distracted. And we agreed to set up, to conform the staff that they should let students know that if they have concerns about what happened, questions, and need somebody to talk to, who the go-to people would be. Up here was the teen center. At the lower grades, it was Ms. Nizalek, who's our mental health specialist, and Lisa Stevens at Irving, but we really didn't think there'd be a whole lot of talk at Irving. The teen center staff pushed into our gym classes here at the middle school, spent a few minutes talking to a particular grade level, to also tell them, hey, if you need to have some place to go to talk, we're here for you. I know there were some thoughts that we should have, from the community, that I heard, that we should have had some formal proactive-led discussions. And that's something which we're going to, which we didn't do, but we're going to be asking the folks at the Coalition for loss. What made this a little tricky, other than, as opposed to if this was a situation like the loss of a student or a parent in our community, is that there was, this is a legal matter as well, and the prosecutor's office was giving me, by way of our local police department, pretty clear directive, not to release confidential information. So, I have to be honest with you, this was a new thing for me, and that's where I think we have to really be willing to learn. But that's your answer to your question.
No, thank you.
Sure. Other thoughts?
Anybody? No?
I have a quick question. First, I'm really excited about the Sources of Strength program coming, just the fact that we're going to start enlisting peers as mentors and that peer-to-peer support. We see that in academics, right? Peers often become peer tutors, but it's nice to see that on a social, emotional level. I think my question is about confidentiality and...
With Sources of Strength?
Yeah, in particular. I don't know if you can talk about that now, but it's just something...
Well, that's something, you know what? That's a great question, and I'll follow up in an email to the board to answer that question because I don't know about the program beyond what I shared with you.
Okay.
Looking forward to learning. But that's something I can find out from either Catherine Burton, or in Edison, I have a contact. I actually visited Edison schools as a guidance counselor, and I believe it's Edison High School who showed me the program and how it works there. Very successful, by the way, in Edison. Rutgers University Behavioral Healthcare has a staff person who works for the Edison schools, and she is responsible for Sources of Strength. Maybe I'll reach out to her, too. So that'll be my follow-up to the board.
And my understanding has always been it's a very, it's a wide-ranging program. I mean, it's like, it's being instituted all across the country, it's research-based, it's, there's really good materials that go along with it and really good, really good, solid training. So, you know, I would assume that those kind of issues are all kind of ironed out with the program.
Who's going to be in those two days of training? Sorry, just talking to him. Who's going to be in the two days of training in May?
That's being run by the Sources of Strength people, so we're sending our folks out. Ms. Holman, I don't know who the teachers are, I could find out for you as well, I can include that in the same follow-up.
Several teachers from the middle school and the high school?
It's at the high school, right now, only.
Excuse me, I didn't have a question. I just had a comment, which is to thank my friends on the Board of Health for their...
Persistence.
Persistence on, thank you, persistence on the Teen Pep program. I believe they sent a letter to Dr. Taylor with their resolution supporting it as return to the school system, and I also, and also the Safe Infant Haven Act, their comments about that, which got to us. And I want to thank the administration and Dr. Taylor specifically for following up and being proactive and doing something about it so that this is moving forward because it's clearly a program that affected a lot of people in a positive way in the past, and it's really wonderful to see that it's going to come back. Both that and some of the other programs. So, thank you.
So, I have one other comment, unrelated to what I just shared, but it's not on my agenda, but I would like to also point out that Thursday, FYI, the New Jersey Department of Education will be in our BARDL, middle and high schools as part of the CUSAC monitoring process. Ms. McFadden will be, if she's available, paying a little visit to them as head of the curriculum chair. This is the organization, this is the process that has, that has a showing off of what we're doing in the area of just curriculum instruction and professional development. We do take them on tours of the buildings. So, thank you if you can be there, Michelle. And that concludes my report.
All right, wonderful. So we will now backtrack to the student representative report.
So, Liv can't be here tonight because she is at her Admitted Students Day...
Oh, cool.
For GW, or Committed Student, I don't know what it is, some orientation. Okay, so we'll start off with Irving. The National Honor Society students from the high school came to read to Irving students last Thursday. We had great feedback, both from the Irving students, but also great enthusiasm from high schoolers. Liv went, she was raving about how great it was. My brother went, he was really excited. The kindergarten teachers had a community building rock painting evening last week. Turnout was excellent, and all the earned money went to the PTO. The first graders went to the state theater last week to see the rainbow fish, and Ms. McNally would like to thank the PTSO for their generosity and for organizing that experience. Coming up in May, following Teacher Appreciation Week, they will be launching a huge student week involving parents, offering another play day, which was a huge success, and various other activities to showcase how important all of our students are. And on May 10th, the first grade team will host a movie night. Information will be coming about this soon. My computer froze, I'm really sorry. I've had bad tech stuff today. Okay, from BARDL, the annual BARDL pennies for playtime raised $2,257 for the Leukemia Lymphomia Society for Students with Cancer.
Mark, how many pennies is that? Quick.
Well, you just add two zeros to the end, right? So, okay.
We just rely on Mark for everything. We don't do any math here.
Okay, sorry, I'm going to pull it up on my phone because...
See, I'm stalling, I'm giving you time, I'm giving you time.
Thank you. Let's see.
Boy, your computer really froze, like, no joke froze.
I think it's, like, the battery's maybe dead? I don't really know, honestly. Sorry.
Don't worry.
Okay, here you go. The annual BARDL PTO Walkathon raised $1,684. The classroom that raised the most money was the second grade class of Ms. Friedland and Mrs. Jovidi at $190, then Mrs. Fitzgerald and Ms. Brenowitz at $179, then Ms. Stodolsky's class at $170, and finally, Ms. Maiden's class at $146. The student that raised the most was Lucius Ruffo, who raised $80, and second was Riley Creaman, who brought in 75. So wow, they're just making a lot of money at BARDL, it seems. The BARDL teacher-to-teacher learning and leading Marigold Initiative has seen double the number of teachers participating. Teachers identify an area where they would like to enhance their practice, they identify a teacher who was a near expert in that area, they meet and consult with the expert teacher and with Mr. Benjamin, and then they observe the practice they are looking to enhance for themselves. The BARDL Gertrude Hawk Chocolate Sale raised well over $4,500, which is all to assist the fifth grade Camp Mason trip. The students continue to take advantage of the BARDL Breakfast After the Bell program with approximately 150 students enrolled and participating daily. BARDL's Bring Your Child to Work attendance numbers is expected to surpass last year's numbers with nearly 20 BARDL district staff committing to participate. BARDL has a full-day agenda with Mr. Benjamin, concluding the day with an award assembly where attendees receive certificates for the day's participation. Okay, and then at the high school, 12 seniors attended the Teach the World Conference at the Rutgers Graduate School of Education on Saturday to present their research and projects as part of the Global Citizenship Program, which is run by Mr. Gold. I know that both Mr. Benjamin and Ms. O were there, as well as Mr. Lassiter, maybe other people from Highland Park who I missed, but it was, were you there, Dr. Taylor, my... Okay, and Dr. Taylor? Were you there? I don't...
I was really proud of...
No, no, I just, it was, it was something that we were all really nervous about, just to be honest, but it was actually a great experience to share with people from outside the district, kind of what we're doing, and made us reflect, I think, a lot about how Highland Park's made this commitment. So, did you want to add anything about that program?
I just wanted to expand on that by saying that the focus of the conference was on equity, and Mrs. Osemeier presented the workshop that she presents to the leadership team. It was a smash hit, she had over 20 people. I came up to her after that, asking if she could do the workshop in their school, so I think we should all be very proud of that. I'm going to be putting a spread together for Taylor notes this Thursday with some pictures, so be on the lookout. It'll break into detail what you're talking about.
Okay, on Sunday, so that was on Saturday, on Sunday, high school students from the Environmental Club ran workshops at the town's Earth Day Festival. The club also cleaned up more than 60 bags of recyclable materials from Donaldson Park and the HP Ecological Preserve in a combined effort with the Rutgers Watershed Project. The high school is completing the administration of the park to students in grades nine through 11 this week. May 7th through the 18th will be the administration of AP exams, and we're so excited. I'm only taking two or three, so. On the 19th, the teen center hosted a job fair for students that included representatives from the HP Recreation Department, the HP Fire Department, the HP Police Department, the US Army, Raritan Valley Workforce Outreach, Northeast Regional Council of Carpenters, Youth One Stop Program, US Navy, the Sparkling Pool, US Air Force, Wawa, Boiler Makers, Local 28, Building and Trades, Innovate Salon Academy, and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 456. And on the same day, the teen center hosted the Annual Diversity Dinner in conjunction with Highland Park Parents of Students of Color. Many wonderful dishes showcasing HP's range of cultures were shared, along with great We led a school-wide moment of silence on April 20th with the heartfelt remembrance of the Columbine shooting at 10:00 a.m. to show support for the national movement to end gun violence. The Highland Park Boys tennis team took third in the county at GMCs. Patrick Lynn won the county championships, first in singles. James Guigang won the county championships at second in singles. Justin Ching finished fourth at third singles. Jonathan Tates and Felix Rojas finished fourth and second, I'm sorry, fourth and second in doubles? I don't think that means anything. Mr. Lassiter helped write this weekend. I can't, some of it, I think, is... On the 18th, the Highland Park Orchestra and Mr. Leonardo had a fantastic spring concert. If you did not attend their rendition of the Star Wars theme, with the help of students from Mason Gross, blew the audience away. Other spring concerts include the Jazz Band on the 26th, the band on May 15th, and the high school choir on May 23rd. And on Thursday at 6:30 p.m., the senior class will be hosting their fourth annual dodgeball tournament. So, actually, might be holding the dodgeball tournament. We'll know tomorrow when all the team registration is in, whether or not we have enough people to play, but it's been really fun in the past, so hopefully that'll happen. And that concludes our report, my report.
That was a doozy. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Nope? All right, so let's move on to our board committee reports. We'll start with Michelle. Where are you, Michelle? There you are, you're hiding behind my... Monique did a fabulous job in your stead last week, so we have a sense already of what happened in the, in the meeting, so you can just run through anything that's new, if there is even anything on the curriculum report, which there actually isn't. So, I don't know if there's anything else you want to highlight.
No, I have nothing, nothing to highlight, nothing's changed as far as I know.
Okay.
There was a question that came through, I have personnel, I don't know. It was a question that we had had about something that was on the committee report in an email about the curriculum, let's see.
About math? Was it about math?
Yes, the accelerated 6A.
That was a question, the comment, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. So the comment was around, you know, making sure that it's inclusive, our accelerated And unfortunately, I didn't, you know, get time to talk to Dr. Taylor about that, but I thought maybe he could comment on that since that came up during the week.
You're asking about the timing.
The plan to do accelerated 6A, there was a discussion that we had had at the committee...
So, clarification, we're going to wait one year to, we're going to wait till 2019, 2020?
Right.
Until we consider how to redesign the middle school math program?
Right.
And that, I think Monique did point that out last meeting.
Yeah, during the meeting, it was pretty clear that what you were saying was that, like, the kids who were not able to do regular sixth, sixth-grade math, like, the kids who would apply or included in the glow program, for example, that those kids...
Oh, I see.
Yeah, those were the students that were appearing to not include.
It was just a comment that, it was something that I commented on during our Equity Committee meeting about being very careful about by which standards and who's judging what students are capable of taking on an advanced math class. That was it. I wanted to bring that to people's attention.
I understand where you were coming from, so that we are including all of our students except those who have extraordinary circumstances that need to be pulled out.
Right, so that's exactly the idea, is to get everyone into the same classroom and then to do alternating supports, so every other day would be a support day. So, I hope that clears it up, and that's it.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, finance. Mark, got anything new for us?
Yep, there's a few new items on here. There are the obvious, new bill list, number four, treasurer's report, and board secretary's report, number six and seven, and board certification, number eight, and number nine is approval of budget transfers. So those are our usual items, just, they're new. On number 11, we have two new out-of-district placements. One of them, and thank you, Linda, for your report before the meeting on this for the committee. One of them, the first one, is a student that's been out of district, was slated to come back to district, and is in fact going back out of district, and this happens, student, I think, has been currently in homeschooling or home instruction. And the second student is a student who is being placed in the Summer Secondary Academy, and again, I think this is a situation that the board, the board is aware of based on some disciplinary reports we've had. Next new item is item number 18, which is participation with the Monmouth Ocean County Educational Services Commission. This is, this is an item where they are providing transportation for a student that was placed in a group home in that area back to Highland Park. So we're simply approving them doing transportation of that student from there to our district, to our, to our high school. Numbers 20 and 21 are pass-throughs. So those are, in both cases, a... Numbers 20 and 21 are pass-throughs, so those are, in both cases, non-public schools getting, getting money that we, that gets passed through, we don't pay it, gets passed through, and we have to approve it. And then the last one, the last two. Item 24 is a recommendation from our auditors that we take a request for proposals for our substitute staffing services. In other words, we don't just go to one, to one source, but we get a request for proposals, so we have competing, competing bits for that. And then the last one is our CPA First Aid Course certifications, and, and that's CPR courses that we provide every year for up to 30 staff members, and that's all, those are all the new ones.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mark right now? No? Okay. So Judy, personnel.
Yes? I do have some changes or additions from last week. Okay, so you'll notice, 1 and 2 look a little confusing. Last week, I mentioned that we were going to be requesting to hire a part-time para, Nikita Ramreka at Irving, and that was for a position that was open. In the meantime, however, we have a new student coming into the district that needs a full-time para, and so we are requesting that Nikita take the full-time position instead, and then we will go out to look for a part-time position for the vacancy. Okay, so that's number 2. We have a number of resignations, that's 7, 8, and 9, so I'm going to move that the board accept the recommendation of the superintendent with regrets for the resignation of Ann Middleton, Randall Post, and Suzanne Mizrahi. Number 10 is approval of credit recovery teacher, Ms. Powell Williams. 11 is approval of substitute credit recovery teacher at the high school, Christine Krieger. Number 14 is approval of a stipend for the Teen Center for MSW Counselor. 15 and 16, I'm not really familiar with what this is. We're asking for approval of affirmative action committee members to present, let's see, presented the Fostering Student Resilience Parent Workshop. What is that, Scott?
I'm going to expand on that for you right now. Just pull up the email. So this is actually a workshop that we're creating, the Affirmative Action Committee, led by Ms. Knapp, and she gave me a description of this wonderful workshop that we're offering to parents. It is an evening that's going to begin with a discussion about what resilience is, characteristics of it, why it's important for our kids in a high-pressure, high-stakes environment that we're, that we're growing up in. The workshop facilitators will focus on SEL skills, social-emotional learning skills, that build resilience. They'll be teaching parents, who we hope will come, the seven Cs that were developed by a pediatrician named Kenneth Ginsberg, specializes in building resilience. With each C that the committee's going to introduce, the group's going to introduce, they'll provide concrete examples to parents and guardians, what they could do with their kids, so these are real skills they can take back with them. What I'm really happy about is that Ms. Knapp has taken the whole affirmative action committee to another level. We didn't used to do this until she came and took direction of it.
Wonderful, thank you. So that will be items 15 and 16. And the last one is approval of a settlement agreement between the board, the Highland Park Education Association, and employee 4329, effective April 23rd. That is everything. Any questions?
Thanks. Judy, anybody have anything for Judy?
Well, just, there's three resignations, so what's the status of filling those positions? Necessarily, I mean, is that something that's already being considered, or will be considered over the summer, or just?
We have advertisements out for the vacant positions.
Okay.
Yeah, and we also recently, Scott attended a job fair at Montclair. And, and there's things to ask.
Montclair?
Yeah, did you go to, I don't remember if there was any others.
No, there was nothing other than that. We've gotten a phenomenal response for all of our positions. In fact, I mentioned to the board earlier, we have 187 applicants for the assistant principalship at the high school, and the date of closing is until Friday. So, wow. People want to work in Highland Park?
I have a ques, oh, I'm sorry. I have a question. What is, on item number 10 and 11, what is a credit recovery teacher?
Have an answer?
You can go ahead.
So, this is a budgeted item. Each year, we offer to students who either were absent, or didn't complete work repeatedly for a particular class, need to make up credit if they're going to graduate. So we assign a teacher, in this case, Ms. Powell, to supervise the student by doing the work that he or she has to make up after school.
Excellent, thank you.
So hasn't there been some discussion of this this year, though, as to like, what are they actually doing? Are they actually making up work?
They wrote letters, and each letter counted for an hour. So people wrote 14 letters to the students in Parkland, and made up 14. So, there's been suggestions from people who've had to do a lot of credit recovery, how the program might change to actually involve more community service, to be able to count other things as credit recovery, and, and I, I have mixed feelings about the program, because a lot of my people I know who have to do it is because they're late every single day, and so I'm, at this point, I'm just going to like, okay, well. Something that goes beyond just writing letters for that. So, but, but yeah, I think that there's definitely been a discussion among students about, like, that this year especially, I feel like there's, and maybe it's just because I'm a senior, so now people actually need to do it, but definitely this idea of, like, there's these set things that you can do, and it's like cleaning the, you know, cleaning one of the rooms, like cleaning the art room or something, or writing letters, and, you know, how much are students getting out of that? And are they really recovering the credit that they lost by missing 10 minutes of a class every morning?
So, thanks for bringing that up. Yeah, so we, Ms. Brady did a yeoman's job trying to come up with community service-related projects for the kids to do to make up credit. It didn't work out, for a couple of reasons. One, we were, we didn't have the resources to figure out what community service projects to do. Ms. Brady surely didn't have the time to engage the kids in doing that. We shifted away from what Julia mentioned, which was what we used to do, have kids clean, help out, straighten up rooms, to something which we went to, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, helping middle school students with homework.
I don't, none of my friends who had to do it chose that option, so I didn't know. And I, I know two or three people, so I'm not speaking for the program at all. I know people who wrote 20 letters.
So I had a meeting on April 17th with Mr. Brady, Mr. Lassiter, and me, the three of us, about this.
You had a meeting with you?
And me. This is a weak spot, it's something which we really need to work on. I've tasked the new assistant principal, I've tasked Mr. Lassiter and Ms. Brady to bring in the new assistant principal, come up with a plan going forward. They did research, I'm looking at some of that research they compiled about what other schools are doing. I had them look at Montclair, West Windsor, Old Bridge, Verona, all kinds of things. What I will tell you that came up a lot in the research is that these schools are using online programs, like Virtual High School, which is a nonprofit organization that we have been using for 8th grade, to have kids make up the work, instead of what we do now. Like, right now with Ms. Powell.
How many students are we talking about?
That's a great question. We currently have, I had that number, give me one second. Six seniors who must make up work. I'm looking at them, they're, the number of hours that they missed, and in some cases, it's heavy lifts, we're talking, I have one student here who owes 31 hours in a mix of classes, like sculpture, business application.
My question's also, and I don't know how, if you guys even, like, keep track of this, but a lot of the people I know who have to do credit recovery, is it, it's because they are late to school every single morning, and when you have three lates, it counts as one absence, and then the absence is rec, so that's why people I know have to complete credit recovery. And then there's other people who have to complete it because they've just been absent a lot, because they've been sick, or out of school, or like skipped, like.
Right, in some cases, they have to do tardies.
I guess my question is, like, one of this is that people are genuinely missing full class periods, and then the other one is that people just aren't disciplined to get to school early enough in the morning, you know, at least, and that's my unsympathetic perspective on it. I'd be the first one to admit it. So, but, so, there's a difference, though, between missing five minutes of class, which is a problem.
Right, right.
And missing a full class period, so like.
That's a good point.
Like, are we keeping track of that, at least so we can understand? Because mine's, mine was only anecdotal evidence that people in the program is because they're late. But I have a feeling that because we've seen lateness at the high school not drop, if anything, like, go up, I think, right, since the new schedule.
That's my guess. My anecdotal information tells me yes.
Perhaps we need to come up with a, just as we do with, like, a number of days that you're late, you're considered absent, a number of minutes that you're late is considered an absence, or?
But the other problem is that you get to the high school late, and they make you wait in a line to get your pass, so if you're late by 30 seconds, you wait in a line for five to 10 minutes for them to count you, and so, which, I don't know what to do about this, because, like, I'm not sympathetic to people being 30 seconds late, because I think that, like, you get to school five, 10 minutes early, like, that's, you know, so, so there's, but there's like, sorry, I'm trying to, trying to represent both a student, but then also, you know, just, like, say what I think, and, and so I guess the question is, like, there has to, there has to be some reflection on the new schedule this year, and the kids being late in general, because I think it's gone up, at least, I know it hasn't dropped.
So, so one of the things I asked Ms. Brady to do, by the way, speaking of that, I mean, there, we brought up a lot of things, I agree with you, I don't know what to do yet about the line, so that's something we have to figure out over the summer before September, it'll be wigged on by then, but, but the other thing you bring up is the first period, the change to the schedule. The building administrators are concerned that the schedule change is actually motivating some people to come to school late. But I'm not sure if that's, I'm not confident that is the case, so I'm waiting on data that breaks out the tardies by period. I want to know if we're talking about students who are consistently late to zero period, because they feel like, ah, it's really not a real, not a core class.
And this may also be something that will be able to be better addressed next year, when we have more staff in place, to tackle these kinds of issues. You know, when there's a dedicated assistant principal in each building, that's going to free up a lot of time.
Absolutely.
To put better systems in place to handle these kinds of issues.
And that was one of the first things Mr. Lassiter said was a problem. Were we, this is an ARC, I have data that goes.
What was one of the first things he said was a problem? You just said that was one of the first things Mr. Lassiter said was, what, what's the one?
Lack of staff.
Okay.
We, I have data that, that shows, I think it's like, since 2010, the, the increase in the number of tardies.
Right, I've seen some of it at the PTSO meetings, so.
What's that?
I've seen some of those numbers at the PTSO meetings, that, like, it's gone, it's just going up and up and up.
And one of the things that he attributed to these, there's like a one cliff that you drop off, is that the year that we lost our deans, we had deans of students, assistant, extra assistant principals, so I think that's going to help. It's like all hands on deck on this issue, though, I've been, we've been talking about it quite a bit.
But I'm curious how having extra staff in the building is reducing the number of late, like, because it seems to me that it's not an issue of being in the building, it's an issue of being, I mean, you're just talking about late to classes in general, late to school, I mean.
I'm just thinking, those additional people can help put better systems in place. You know, you can, you can intervene earlier if you have more people that are able to look at that issue and say, hey, this kid's already been, you know, we're a month into school, this kid's already been late five times, somebody needs to sit down and work with this kid, find out what's going on, find out what we can do to, you know.
Okay, yeah.
You know, you just, more hands on deck is.
And Mr. Lassiter thought if we had more adults, I'm sorry, hovering around core groups of students?
Is there, and maybe you already covered this, but is there a grace period of, like, two minutes, or five minutes, or one minute, or 30 seconds, or something?
The argument would be that your grace period was.
I understand, but is there?
You're late, you're late.
I'm just saying, before somebody gets a tardy.
But there is a grace period, right, between, and, and it's different for me, maybe, because I don't come in for the first period, so there's a bell, the first bell that rings between, like, there's a bell that rings between the beginning of school and the beginning of first period. At least there is, there is for me, because it's maybe, but that, maybe I'm just hearing the bell that ends first period, you know, it used to be that school started at 7:48, but then your class started at 8:51 or something? I don't know what's.
I don't know that, but I do, but, I mean, kind of back to your question, your concern, if you're late, whenever that bell is, you're considered late. No, hey, you're only one minute late, but that might be something we need to reflect upon. Now, maybe there's a percentage of the class that if you miss, you lose credit on. Mr. Krieger?
I just wanted to say that back in the 19th century, when I was in high school, that, that if you were late some number of times, you're, you've lost academic credit in that class, and you're late enough times.
Which is the case right now.
I know, but this credit recovery stuff, I mean.
Oh, you didn't get it back.
So you can get it back, I mean, I, that's why, I didn't understand what it was, frankly, it's kind of the craziest thing I've heard.
We, back in my day, we didn't recover anything.
We didn't have it.
No, no, but it's, it's a good point.
You just, you don't, you don't come in, and you do it consistent.
But you're not really recovering the class at all, that's the problem.
That's, that's, that's what I'm saying.
You're missing business apps, you're not going to business apps during your credit recovery, so.
I think there's several issues, it sounds like, but one of the things that I think.
So we will look forward to a presentation on this, next year.
It's coming, trust me.
We will look forward to, early next year, a presentation on the squeaky-clean, noon-improve recovery program.
It's going to happen, and I'll probably have the new assistant principal make the presentation.
There you, there you go.
I wanted, I had a thought while you were talking about this, and I, I think that trying to figure out, you know, what is keeping everyone from being on time is quite important, right, and it's a huge task.
Depends who you ask.
As a, as a high school parent, it's been a change in our family routine, so that the high schoolers are really getting themselves to school, except for bad weather, whereas before, my husband going off to work would drop them at school, so everyone was out the door at the same time. So just from my family, I can say that the routine has changed because of the time change, and we still haven't, it's April, we still haven't gotten it 100% down, honest to God. It would be interesting to do a survey, or some sort of information gathering from everyone, because our family is our family, it's not everyone's family, maybe there are some issues that we don't know about.
The narratives I get from the leadership team, including Irving, we have some students at Irving who have been absent 40, 50 days, is mixed, somewhat, school phobia, anxiety, changes in family, we have students shuttling between two parents, because they have shared custody, and then I also hear about some parents, unfortunately, who, they just don't take, they, especially if they're young, are responsible for getting their kids to school, and they don't, for whatever reason, and then some willful disobedient kids who just don't care, and they don't have enough, and there's no accountability put in place to, to get them to go there. I think what we're finding out about our discipline approach, what Ann Gregory has told us, it's a combination of things, right? It's about accountability as well as support, and I think it applies to truancy as well.
I would put money on the fact that it's not the willfully, you know, disobedient problem, it's not that in the majority. I would think that that is the minority of cases. I think that, you know, for the little kids, they're waiting for their parents to get them to school, they can't get there on their own. For the older kids, it's, you know, perhaps a difficulty in juggling different responsibilities, and, you know, maybe they have to get their younger sibling to school at Irving for 8:00, and then they don't have class until 8:40 at the high school, so they stop somewhere. You know, there's lots of stories, I think that we, before we jump to conclusions and start saying, you know, slap them on the wrist and accountability, before we get to that place of, you know, policing people as if they're criminals for being late, I would like to take a more compassionate approach, to actually learn about what is difficult about this new situation, because the, the numbers are rising, lateness is a problem.
Well, we have to get numbers before we.
Absolutely, that's just.
Before we say it is a fact.
In, in numbers also, do we know what the break is, or what the difference is between first-period tardiness and second-period tardiness?
Well, that's what Scott said he was going to find out.
I mean, between first-period tardiness in the previous years, and then this current year's, the break between first.
I do have that information right now, it's a lot, so maybe I should wait. I do want to share this with you, though. Michelle, we did actually survey and received 262 responses from high school students about why they were late. We did this a couple of months ago. Believe me, the issue of tardiness, I am badgered or beleaguered by my administration about it, so I asked them to come up with a survey, just a couple of quick data points.
But the survey was emailed out to the student body, so. But the survey was emailed out to the student body, so a lot of, and then we were instructed to take it during a homeroom period, and there was technology difficulty across the school. That meant that some people couldn't date. So I know for a fact, I set out surveys as part of Environmental Club all the time, and the 260 people who responded, that's like a huge number for the high school, that's really significant. But there, but it wasn't necessarily, you know, I, like, a lot of it was still the people who opened their emails, I think, or the people who were able to get on. So I just.
So that explains the responsiveness rate or the validity of the answers?
I just think it's something to keep in mind, like, because I don't know which, I don't know how good a group of people we were pulling from this. A lot of times with the surveys that we send out, a lot of it is like, there's a lot of responder bias, I think, based on the people who, like, are checking their emails regularly, or, like, you end up with some people in higher grades, not lower grades, because I, I'm just.
I'll throw it out there.
I just wanted to think about.
Just only like three or four.
Not to say that these numbers are, like, invalid, just something to.
Okay.
Keep in.
So 262 students responded to this question. Has the new schedule helped you to get on school, to get to school on time? 75.2% said yes. The next question, what is your reason, your main reason for being absent? 64.1% said illness. 15.8, 8% said other. Okay.
Stuff, stuff. Was there a split category?
9.3% said need more sleep.
That's, that's, that's.
The Board of Health needs to take that up.
It's true that there are people who are chronically late because of sleep problems. I mean, and, and there's other reasons for that beyond, like, but that's true, that it's, that's a thing.
I'm sorry, that was for being absent, forgive me. That was for being absent, illness. What is your main reason for being late? 30.7% said need more sleep. 33.5% said other. Only, maybe this speaks to what you said, Ms. McFadden, 8.2% said laziness.
Because people love to.
I mean, I, ah, 260 responses to this question. Do the rules hold you accountable for being on time and/or in school? 77.7% said yes. And then if yes to that question, the question was, do you change your behavior after receiving a consequence for excessive lates or absences? So here's the accountability question. Seven, God bless you, 77.9% said yes. And then there were some general comments. I'll see if it's that he, ah, the, the question, this was an open-ended question, answer question. The question was, what do you think would help improve the attendance problem at Highland Park High School? One person, I mean, there was a lot of, I'm not sure, I don't know, less homework? Create a system where the school tells the students, the school starts five or 10 minutes before it actually does.
Lie to me, lie to me. That's how you get me to school early. Lie to me. Go into, break into my house and set all my clocks.
Lunch detentions for over three lates. I believe the new schedule is great for the students that utilize its benefit, however, the punishments are not enough. More punishments.
That was probably.
More punishments. More punishments. Seniors stop caring, and everyone else doesn't care because nothing bad happens to them.
That's right.
Gives zeros, oh, well, school's starting later. Gives zeros to the kids who can't come on time if they've had over three warnings.
Is that you too?
I don't know, but it's.
I could go on and on and on. It's very interesting, because a lot, a lot of data here. Maybe I'll put something together that's more cohesive.
Do we not have a Young Republicans Club?
I'm sorry?
It just sounds like a very conservative comment list there. It's like, more punishments, accountability. No one listens anymore.
I don't know, that's, I don't know, that's a Young Republican. I don't know.
Not that there's anything wrong with that, I just, I'm surprised at the comments, that's all. It sounds like not high school students answered them.
But I do think there's frustration from people who, like, are consistently on time, and then people who aren't. And the fact that there's all this punishment, there's all this, like, need to make up work, and it's this, like, like ridiculous process of, like, writing, like, and, like, people feel like it's busy work. And so, and there's, like, complaining about this, so people are observing this. And then it all works out because you get the credit for your class ultimately, and you graduate. So it's, like, there's something messed up on both ends. For people who have to do it are frustrated by the way it's structured, and the people who don't have to do it are frustrated that there's even the system in place, and that the system, to a certain extent, is kind of phony. And I just, and I also think that, like, when we listen to the results of the survey, some of it is like, do you think you're lazy? Like, is the reason you're late because you're lazy? Like, most people don't say, like, yes, that's why. Or, or similarly, you know, like, did you change your actions based on being disciplined? Well, it's easy to say yes, but like, do we know, right? Like, because, because relative to the number of kids who are being disciplined by somebody like Ms. Brady, do we then know whether they go and they aren't, aren't late anymore? Like, I don't know. Do we know that? Because that's not telling us definitively, that's telling us what the students perceive or would like to report, or, you know, I, I don't know. I just think it's, and I can't, I can't speak for experience on this. So it's like, I don't.
You know, we're framing a few good interview questions for the assistant principal, by the way.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think a lot of this really will improve just with more people there to deal with the issue and putting.
Yeah, a little more discipline, too.
All right, let's move on.
Thank you.
And I think, I think it will be important, obviously, early, sometime early next year for us to get, for the board to get a presentation on what's happening here in terms of the research that's been done on the tardiness problems, and, you know, what we're doing with kids who actually get to the point that they need to make up credit. Alrighty. So anybody else have any questions on anything personnel related?
No.
Okay. So Anne, can we move on to policy?
Yes, sure. We have two policies, again, on the agenda tonight. I'm going to move that we table, let's see, what number it?
8454.
8454. I'm not sure what number it is on the agenda.
Oh, 1.
1.
D1.
D, right.
D1B.
D1B.
That's, yes. D1B, thank you. Lice, particularism. I think we need a little bit more input from our school nurses and members of the board who had a number of comments to make. So we'd like to just take that back, take a look at it again, and then we will bring it back for first reading and a, and a date in the near future. Student records, that's what we discussed last time, is a change, so that we no longer collect birth dates on our student records. And I still, I was going to do some more research and try to figure out what other records are out there, how many sort of iterations there are of student records. But for now, for first reading, we're going to leave it as it is with, with that one change.
Anybody have any questions about that one particular policy? I, I did just kind of want to bring up a procedural issue. I mean, like, particularly with this Lice one, I think it, it highlighted, like, a little bit of an issue. I mean, I think the hope would be that before the, and this is kind of what we talked about with Keith as well, before a policy comes before the board, I think it really helps on the administrative end that it goes to, you know, like, in this case, the nurses, or if it has to do with the teachers, goes through Keith, you know, so we get that feedback before it comes to us. So we're not, you know, we don't want to be creating policy in a vacuum that, you know, is going to certainly negatively impact or go radically against the practice that's already established. Or if it is going to go radically against the practice that has already been established, we need to understand why and based on what, you know, input. So, you know, I, I want to try to take some of the pressure off of the, the policy committee as well, you know, so that once things come to us, they've kind of already been fleshed out, you know, like, we've gotten the input from the nurses, or we've gotten the input from Keith, or we've gotten from the input from the teachers that we need to get. And then by the time it hits us, you know, hits our plate, it's, it's pretty well fleshed out. And that being said as well, I think from the policy end too, you know, because I think there's a big chunk that are going to, that need to come before all of us, you know, of things that need to be reviewed annually, you know, you have to be, you know, comfortable farming out whatever is.
Yes.
Whatever is finance to finance, whatever is personnel to personnel, not taking all that on to the personnel committee, you know, that's part of the committee work that each individual committee should be doing as well. Each committee has certain policies that fall under their umbrella, and those, those committees need to be doing that policy work in their own committees. And then it can just come to the policy committee, so that it's already gotten the administrative review, it's gotten the review from the, the committee that oversees that, and then it'll go to you. So it's not just, you know, you and, you know.
Yeah, I'm actually very behind in doing that, to be fair. Yeah, I'm.
But that, I mean, that's an easy, it's a timeline.
That's been scheduled.
That's an easier job to say, hey, this one's finance, you finance, you guys deal with this. Hey, these are personnel, you guys deal with that. So you don't, you're not doing any initial review. Scott's doing an initial review administratively to see if there's anybody he needs to pull in on any particular policy, and then it just goes to individual committees, and then it comes back to policy. So these aren't all on, aren't all on your shoulders, so we can move through some of this stuff that we need to move through.
That's a great idea. With that in mind, moving through, Scott, I am kind of tapped out. I wonder if I could ask you to schedule the next policy meeting? Would you mind sort of sending around an email and figuring out when you'd like to do it? Would that be okay? As you do with the other committees?
About meeting?
Yeah.
Sure.
I, I know I sort of, at the beginning of this, I was like, I'm going to, like, really take the initiative. And I think I've fallen off a little bit under the pressure of other work.
No problem, I'll put a doodle out.
Thank you, appreciate it. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, so the only one that we're going to be moving is 8330, student records, and nobody has any questions about that for first reading, right?
Nope.
Okay. So Monique, do you have something for us for Equity and Excellence?
Yes, I do. We met on the 19th, and we discuss policy issues. But we will flesh out some more, I think, now, based on this new suggestion here. But.
Whoops.
Yeah. The first discussion we had was related to the school district protocol, related to HPPD Police Department access via the borough's youth officer to a student's school profile. We, it was discovered recently that the HPPD does have an internal practice of referring all suspicious persons' reports involving juveniles to the borough's youth officer, regardless of whether the report resulted in an investigation. Sergeant Joe Curbelo, the youth officer, has described this policy as benign and intended to be helpful for borough juveniles, who he tends to know through his presence in the schools and in the community. And he feels that he's able to often vouch for students who may be involved in some sort of incident with the police in town. However, committee members did share concerns about the potential negative implications of this practice, particularly with regards to students who may be more vulnerable than others, and may have challenges reflected in their school history. So it just raised a whole bunch of questions amongst the committee, and that, one of them being, what policy of any does a district have and/or follow related to its relationship with the HPPD, and particularly the youth officer? And when and how often is Sergeant Curbelo in the schools? Does he have a schedule? What schools does he visit? Scott did indicate that Sergeant Curbelo is typically called in when there is a concern, such as a fight or other action that poses a threat to harm any student or staff. Any concern, I'm sorry, additional concern was mentioned about the nature of these calls to the youth officer, and the need to have possibly a first responder trained in de-escalation, mental health, or student special needs situations. We agree that the district presently has limited unclear protocols around its relationship with the youth officer and the PD in general. We don't, we don't have an SRO, we don't have a district PD, as some larger urban school districts have. However, we do clearly have a relationship that we feel needs to be further fleshed out and clearly articulated in policy, particularly when it comes to the sharing of information on our students. Scott did bring to our attention that the district has adopted or signed on to the New Jersey Uniform State of Memorandum of Agreement between Education and Law Enforcement Officials. This is a huge 71-page policy that is apparently required, but it's actually just a guide for NJ school districts to establish policy in terms of their relationship with law enforcement officials. The memorandum originated in 1988, it was recently revised in 2015. It covers issues such as school safety and security, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, hazing, gang reporting, a whole list of potential incidents, including coordination of HIB and criminal investigations. And it, it has also been revised and clarified to assist school officials and law enforcement in their efforts, joint efforts. It was noted that the policy includes protocols pertaining to a school's request to access law enforcement records pertaining to students. However, it does not mention the guidelines on law enforcement's access to school records pertaining to students. So that's an area that Scott thought was worth noting in that policy. Another potential policy resource that we, we discussed was the ACLU model policy for school-based PDs, which, again, it's not really our case, but some of the areas covered in the policies may be useful reference for our purposes. Scott will be following up with Jonathan Bush, our attorney, to determine whether there are any applicable district policy currently in place and/or state law that we, that can be provided to us as guidance, or that we can use in development of a policy. We then moved to cultural competency policy. Last spring, Equity and Excellence began researching a new cultural competency policy for the district modeled after a policy adopted by the South Orange Maplewood Schools in 2015. So we took time to review the policy, which lays out in just one page, a broad definition and overall components of cultural competency in schools. We agree that for the development of our own policy, we should include more specifics, and really kind of flesh out what we mean by cultural competency, both between staff and students, and between staff and their colleagues in the district. So for follow-up action, we will expect to see this policy coming soon to the policy committee agenda. Then lastly, this, we talked about what, Michelle, the issue that you raised. It was raised in our meeting in terms of concerns about inclusion of all students in the 6A math access for all, and how that would, how we would guarantee that all students would have some access to this new proposed accelerated math program for all. So I don't need to go into that. And I think that summarizes everything. There are references that I did post, and I don't know if that will be included in the agenda, but I did include the South Orange Maplewood Cultural Competency Policy, as well as the Model Board Policy regarding school district and PD relations, and there's a 71-page Uniform State Memorandum Agreement as well. So you can have at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any specific questions for Monique?
Yeah. Clearly with policies, we still have to get like, a better workflow going. Do you propose that sort of Scott get back to you on those questions, and then, you know, once, you could take a first whack at perhaps a policy?
I think that's a good idea, that we could, by the time Equity and Excellence meets again, Scott will have gathered some more information.
Okay.
And we can flesh it out a little bit more, and then come with more.
And maybe we'll get to a proposed policy about.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, yeah.
I mean, it'd be great if we could work, I, I don't know if it, well, we'll talk about that later. The memorandum of agreement, I mean, how do you think we should proceed on that? Maybe everybody should take a look at it? I mean, I have never read through it, and.
Yeah, I.
It sounds awful.
It's, yeah, it's very long, because it covers everything that you could possibly imagine.
Right.
And so, a lot of it probably would not pertain necessarily to our district, or, you know, hopefully wouldn't. So I don't know what the best approach is. I know that Scott talked about speaking to Jonathan first, about.
That's a good idea.
So I think maybe after that conversation, we'll have better guidance as to how we should even tackle that.
Go about it. Okay, that sounds great. Cool. Thanks, Scott. Thank you.
Yeah. I don't, do you have a sense, I don't have a very clear sense of the difference between, like, all these titles that there are for officers in schools, SROs versus, I just don't, I don't know what all these terms mean. They all get kind of thrown around, but I don't know what they actually are. I don't know what a, what Officer Joe is versus an SRO versus, you know.
He's a school liaison officer, I think was the last time he was, we had a meeting and about his role in school.
Yeah, interestingly enough.
We don't have a policy yet, right?
Right. I mean, yeah, I mean, I think that's what I'm getting at, you know, is I think part of what's got to come out of this is like, you know, a real formalization of that, of that relationship, and.
Because I happened to check on the borough website recently. I didn't even know, there is a statement to that effect, that Sergeant Curbelo, or whoever would be that person, is the liaison. That's the term that the town uses for his role. So, but however, again, that's not really clearly articulated or understood on our end, right?
This would be a good topic.
And it is different from an SRO. He's not an SRO. He is the town youth officer who has relationship with our schools. But that's about all we.
So this is a good topic of conversation also for our meetings with Gail, when me and you and Gail and Susie Wachovitz, who's the, the council liaison to the schools, I think that we need to put this on our agenda for our next meeting to kind of.
Sure.
Formalize this a little bit more.
I have a meeting with Officer Curbelo tomorrow morning at 9:30 to talk about just that, about your perspective on his role, as we get into the larger discussion tomorrow night at the Safety Committee meeting, Safety Forum.
There's a, there's a model policy we presented about a year ago, which, which was about the different roles police officers might take in our district. And none of the roles were, were, was a liaison officer. They had much more official titles. And we just opted not to, you know, not to even go into any readings on it, because it didn't apply to us at all.
Yeah, so I mean.
So it's very unclear. I mean, in fact, I had a, I had to ask around, I think eventually Scott said, he's a lia, you know, he's not a official, right, an official resource, he's a liaison to us. But the, the policy was. But the policy was very, very confusing in a district like this, you know, in a small district like this.
And I think the main concern initially that sparked this whole conversation is, again, the possible negative implications that this has, because it is a gray area. But we do know that information is being shared internally. That's the PD practice that we obviously have no control over. But, you know, there's access to our students' information, you know? And I think there's something to be said for us defining, right? You know, our position where that's concerned and clearly articulating it.
I just think... I didn't mention this in my report, but last Thursday, we had a... We always have a weekly debate in Model Union Club. Last Thursday, the debate was on racial profiling, and Mr. Gold, one of the advisors, invited Officer Joe Cabello to come and participate in the debate. And he did, and it was awesome. And we didn't have as much people... I mean, we tried. We reached out to a lot of people, and it's just hard to get people to sort of drop into clubs that they're not... don't really feel they're a part of. But he came, and I was there, and there was about 10 or 15 kids there. And I think it's great, the kind of relationship he has with the students and the kind of ability we have to talk. But I also agree with what you said, that it's also... it's unclear what his role is and that it would be more comfortable for students... Because there's already kind of a level of uncomfortability, like having a police officer in the schools, period. So if it was clear, not just, like, on a policy level, but made clear to the students the reason, you know, that he's there and what... like, to what extent he is involved, sort of, I think that would be helpful for students as well, to clarify that presence.
Right. Can I just add? And that's wonderful that he is there and doing that. I think just beyond that, the point is, again, if he is there and has these kind of relationships and this kind of access to our students, if a student or juvenile is involved in anything in the town, police-related, and there's a direct line of communication between, you know, Officer or Detective Sergeant Cabello, I'm sorry, and his fellow officers, it's... You know, we talk about racial profiling and profiling in general. What sort... Are we creating a rap sheet for kids, right? In terms of that two-way communication? And that kind of free-flower exchange of information can be problematic. So it's one thing to clearly explain why he's there and how he wants to really establish relationships, which is great. We want that. But then he's also responsible, as a police officer, to that role that he plays. So that's where it really gets potentially devastating on some students.
No, I agree that clarifying it is good, because it also limits... It gets rid of what you said, the gray area, that where it's just sort of unlimited access or whatever, which is uncomfortable for a lot of students.
Right. And beyond all of this, you know, I think we can probably all agree that this particular person is a fantastic asset to our community and all of that. But, I mean, we don't... Not that I don't trust the police to appoint a great person next or the person after that, but that person could bring a different sensibility to the job. So that's why it needs to be defined.
Can you make it tomorrow night by any chance, Julia?
I'm trying my best.
Okay.
It's going to depend a little bit about what my schedule looks like on Wednesday as well, kind of like mine for that. But I'm going to try my best to be there at 6:30, right?
Cool.
Great. Okay. If there isn't anything else from Monique, we will move on to public comment. If our one member of the public has anything to comment on, it looks like that's... Nope, that's not the case. All right. So we're going to move... All right. Sometimes HPE likes to make comments. So we will move on to our board action items. Michelle, could you move the curriculum and instruction items, please?
Sure. One through...
One through three, please. We'd like to move one through three. Can we have a second?
Second.
Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay. Mark, could you please move the finance and facilities items?
Yeah, I'd like to move items one through 25.
Is there a second?
Second.
And Linda, could we please have a roll call?
And just a word to those two board members?
We're on it.
Okay.
I have it circled.
Awesome. Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes, but I'd like to abstain on 12.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes, but abstaining on 13.
See? Look how prepared we are. They're awesome.
You guys are top...
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay. Judy, could you please move the personnel items?
I'd like to move items two through 17, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Sorry, I think I forgot that part of the last two. Just going right past the discussion, people. Let's go.
Okay. One second. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Item number one is being rescinded. Is that correct?
No, I think the dates are just being changed.
Oh, the date, yes.
Yeah. There's just a different end date.
She was full-time for one week?
Oh, I see.
So would you like to move all these ones through 17?
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying that.
And I'm sorry, who was the second?
Rob, you have the second.
Oh, second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And no discussion? So Linda, could we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay. And finally, Anne, policies?
Policy? Yeah. Yes, I'd like to move that we adopt 1A for first reading and that we table the policy in 1B.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? No? Okay. Seeing none? None? Linda, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay. So we will move on to our board liaison reports. Your ears perked up, Scott?
Nothing... No meeting was held since the last meeting.
Okay. Michelle? Anything get more lively over at HP-TV or the public information?
I don't know. I'm, you know, not getting any emails inviting me to meetings, so...
All righty.
I'll bake some cookies and I'll show up. I don't know. But I haven't heard anything from either of my committees.
Yeah. Gary got in touch with us the other day about potentially coming to film our PTO budget meeting, but, you know, well, it'll be a conversation for another day. But we're finding now that we're a few years out from our more salacious budgets, not a whole heck of a lot of interest out there.
Are we giving free donuts and coffee? What's going on? What's going on? Are we not giving free donuts and coffee?
We're not doing something. So, you know, for next year, we will take a look at, you know... I think it's been a very nice practice to go out into the community and talk about the budget. The first year, I think it was very...
It's good.
Very important, and I think each year, it's been showing to be less and less.
No, I think actually Michelle wants to bake next year.
Michelle, you are welcome to bake treats.
We need a DJ, too.
There you go. All right. Rob, I know you have some exciting stuff for us from HP.
Well, yeah, right. So the Ed Foundation met this past week. I did not attend. They really were going through all of their planning for the upcoming Highland Park Educational Foundation Spectacular, which is May the 12th.
Oh, so do we even have it wrong on our agenda? It's educational foundation, not education foundation.
Correct.
So we need to correct that on our agenda.
We're going to fix that.
They must, like, constantly go through this. It's not education foundation, it's educational foundation.
I think there is another Highland Park, or two, or three, and one of them, they have a Highland Park Education Foundation, and so this one has the AL. But anyway, this one is going to be fun. It's May the 12th. That's actually just two weeks from Saturday. And that is honoring Donell Morgan, who grew up across the street from me and is a Rockette and a wonderful young woman. And so she is going to be doing a little presentation, and then there will be, I think, some music and desserts. So I think tickets are still available, I believe.
It's still up on their website for the educational foundation. I have to keep saying it to myself. Okay. Thank you very much, Rob. Judy, do you have anything for us from the Commission for Universal Access?
No, the commission met last Monday, when we were here, and I did not get a chance to reach out.
Okay. Let's see. Library, did we get anything from Rebecca from the...
Sorry, we haven't had a meeting since the last one as well.
Okay. And shared services, I have heard absolutely nothing. Ruth, do you have anything for us from CPAC?
I just emailed Tara this afternoon. She said they had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, I think she said, and it's canceled. She is in DC right now advocating on behalf of those with mental illness and eating disorders.
Well, there you go.
So thank you, Tara, in DC. And nothing else is planned right now.
Okay. Monique, do you have anything for us from POSOC?
No. No meeting since our last one. They'll be meeting this Wednesday evening at 7:00.
And I'm so sad that I missed the diversity...
Oh, well, yes, the diversity dinner did occur.
So frustrated.
Yeah. It was very well-attended and always a good time, lots of good food and socializing. And a nice array of families and students just from across the high school, Irving, Bartle. It's just a nice mix of age ranges as well, so...
That is always a nice event for multiple reasons. That definitely being one, because we don't often get all those different kids from all those different schools together.
Anne, anything from human relations?
Yeah, I think we're two months behind. So I'm not sure if I ever read the minutes from March, and then I was going to ask Monique... Oh, March is your meeting. Right, I'm sorry. Did I not read the ones from February? Oh, I know. April. Let's just start with March. I'm so sorry. We had a meeting last week, and we had another meeting a month before. Monique, would you like to talk about the March meeting?
I have to really go back to those notes to be able to talk about it.
Do you want me to start with the less controversial?
Yeah.
I did not attend this meeting. Monique attended as a member of the public. Let's see. Monique has some things to say. There was an announcement of the new Human Relations Commission-sponsored book club event. The book is going to be Secrets We Kept... Secrets We Kept, I'm sorry. Three Women of Trinidad by Crystal Satal. Date is undetermined as of yet, I believe. But keep an eye out for that on the Human Relations Commission's Facebook page. There was discussion about planning Earth Day, which just happened, and the Human Relations Commission always has at least one table there. Ashton was working on creating a network for graduate and graduating students. He was going to work with POSOC. I don't know if that happened or if it's going to happen. And let's see, there was a discussion of... I don't know if... Do you want to talk about the visiting town data? Why is it called the visiting town data?
I have no idea. But yeah, that was the bulk of the meeting time that I attended. So there's a lot there.
Did you want to talk about it? You want me to just give the basic?
I can talk about it.
Okay. Great.
So I will... I actually have the official HRC notes that Matt Hirsch shared with me, because I was not that good at wearing two hats, so I didn't actually take the best notes during the meeting. The visiting town data set... A portion of the meeting was involved a member of the ACLU People Power Middlesex County Group coming out and sharing an analysis of police department data from 2016 through 2017 on traffic stops, citations, and use of force, which, through this analysis of the data, suggested patterns of racially biased policing practices in Highland Park. So there was a discussion of this data and recent policing incidents, which led the HRC members to talking about some of the ways that the committee can help with facilitating improved police-community relations and overall racial relations. Matt Hirsch announced that he's negotiating with Elizabeth Williams Riley, President of the American Council on Diversity, for four quarterly projects or forums for the community. And of course, she has, I think she's already come to Highland Park in the fairly recent past, or not so recent past, and did some really wonderful workshops on diversity and implicit biases and so forth. So he's looking to have an ongoing relationship with her. There are also plans in the work for the head of the American Conference on Diversity to meet with the police chief and Councilwoman Elsie Forster-Dublin, who is the Safety Committee Chair. So I think at this point, the HRC is just trying to figure out the role that they can play in really helping to support the town, the community members that have their concerns, and the police department in ensuring that there is a sense of response to the community concerns and that there's a resource that the HRC can be to community members who feel like they need to be able to voice their concerns regarding policing incidents. Okay. Let me see. Can I continue, or did you have something else from the other meeting? Because there's a few...
I have something from April, but that can wait till you're finished.
Okay. Okay, so this was just further extended discussion on HRC's role in resolving problems. There was clarification that at this point, the HRC really does not have a defined role. There is a lack of legal enforcement, so there was a discussion about whether it's really a, should it be a CCRB, a Civilian Complaint Review Board, as was the initial recommendation for the HRC. And Matt made it clear that that's not, they don't have the body to do that, the resources to serve as that, as an official civilian complaint review board. But Matt and Ashton will be discussing further with the Borough and the, you know, full council and the mayor on how best the HRC can support the community without being a full CCRB. And I think that's it on that. A county prosecutor is partnering with the Board of Health and Public Safety on an opioid program that was discussed and also discussed, which it looks like it passed, was a roundtable and panel discussion with Representative Palone on a new mentorship program, which, I'm sorry, I don't have much detail on that, but it looks like it passed. And I think that's it. The last fun thing was that they, our HRC is rolling out new decals for the storefronts that will kind of promote the HRC, but also has some really cool artwork from some of the students in the district. I think some Bartle students did some artwork that'll be featured on the decals. They wanted to have it ready for Earth Day, but I think that got pushed back a little bit.
And I think the decals will say something about all are welcome here.
Oh, yeah, welcome here message, yep.
Yeah, so it's something that stores can voluntarily do if they want to sort of send a message that they're inclusive and welcoming and that sort of thing.
Yep.
I would just move on to April. Thank you. That was very detailed and articulate, as opposed to me not knowing what month we're talking about. We also had a meeting last week. Not too much school-relevant stuff, except there was a lengthy discussion, again, about policing in Highland Park. There was talk about, I gather that the mayor's commission on understanding, or committee on understanding that was formed as a result of the incident with one of our students and the council meeting, in which different members of the community spoke out. They have either recommended, or perhaps they have secured, an agreement to have an audit done of the police department. Is that, is that like a firm agreement, or is that still in the works?
That's still in the works, but at the last council meeting, it was announced that the council has agreed to move forward on an audit, but it is going to be a comprehensive audit of the town, not per se only focusing on. So, there's still some, some working out that needs to be done in terms of what the community was hoping for and expecting, in terms of really focusing on policing practices and what the Borough intends to do with their audit. So, they're in the process of identifying at this point, going through the process, of course, of finding a company that's suitable for both purposes.
From my, yeah, from my perspective, that's going to be very difficult. I mean, there was a lot of talk at this meeting about, I guess, the town is looking to hire an auditor that can look at things like budget practices, instead of, you know, tighten things up around municipal administration. And there was definitely a concern expressed that there's not going to be an auditing group that specializes in sort of auditing and then hopefully making recommendations for improving racial and ethnic relations in the community and also dealing with municipal budgeting. So, there was some confusion expressed by members about whether there will in fact be the two audits, because they are in fact separate. And speaking personally.
Those are much different.
They're very different, yes. There's not too many to do both.
We have a lovely gentleman who comes and gives us an audit once a year.
Yes.
He would not be very good at auditing our discipline practices. For example.
Yeah, exactly. So, I, speaking personally.
Lovely, he's a lovely gentleman.
Yes, he is, yes.
But I would not task him with those two jobs.
Right. So, speaking personally, I hope that the town will commit to actually doing a police department audit. I know there was a lot of resistance. We had an interesting meeting, actually, it was quite difficult. There was, there's an officer, an HPPD officer, who's a member of the Commission, and he expressed a lot of, I think, feeling that the town was sort of against him and that the relationship from the perspective of the police was not good either. And I think he was speaking personally, but he expressed a fair amount of reluctance to undergo, to participate in an audit of that sort. And there's a fair amount of resistance to the ACLU statistics and whether they could be accurate. Again, I think he was speaking for himself personally, but we had a lengthy discussion about that. And I mean, I think the upshot was that, you know, this is something that the police department will probably, you know, agree to be engaged in, but clearly, there, there's a lot of difficult emotions coming from the police department as well. But I hope that we will move forward with that, and I'm hoping, the express, the hope was expressed at this meeting that the company chosen, or the group chosen, will be one that has worked with police officers before, so that hopefully, there will be a feeling on the part of the officers, you know, that these are people making recommendations who knows something about what police work is. And I think there is certainly a feeling that perhaps the ACLU didn't need to be coming in and telling them what to do. It's a feeling that I hope they will resist, but I certainly hope the town will look into sort of a nonprofit, or an agency, or entity of some sort that specializes in assisting police departments with these issues and doing an audit to see what's really going on, particularly if there are going to be repeated challenges to the ACLU numbers. That's.
And if I can just add to that, I, because I've been participating in some of these meetings, and I did raise, I think, a valid point, being a board member here, I've been able to see, and I know this is probably fairly recent history, that the board, I think the town really should follow the board's sort of practice with being transparent with this sort of data, which can be difficult. We look, you know, you look at your school discipline records, you look at achievement discrepancies, and you make that information available. You get cultural, you know, in this case, we got cultural competency audits of the district.
Right.
Really looking at some not-so-easy sort of information that we have to process and accept, right, and figure out how best to improve in those areas. And it's really not about an individual teacher, you know, or administrator.
Or police officer.
Right, so I'm just drawing that analogy.
Right, perfect.
So, it is, I think it is a perfect analogy, that maybe the district has come a long way and it wasn't always like that in its practice, but I think that there is a lot to be learned from the way the district is now handling some of these areas on, you know, on our end. And the PD has to, has to come along, I think.
I hope that they will come to see it as something that has been, that is helpful to them, as it was to us. I mean, I expressed that as a board member, you know, this was, I don't know if I expressed this. I should have expressed that, you know, that's been very illuminating to us, and I don't think we've felt, I mean, we've felt somewhat defensive, you know, to varying degrees, but, but in general, we've welcomed this information, even though it is difficult to hear at times. But I hope the police department will, will take that up, too. I mean, suggestion, I think Ashton suggested that, you know, maybe this could be an opportunity for the HPPD to really be a model organization and to really put themselves out there nationally as a department that's willing to really take a look at themselves and look at audit data and think about what it means and, and make some changes.
I'm wondering if, you know, it's funny, because when you said that the community or the council, the police department should follow the example of the board and the kind of reflecting, I thought of the Danielson model and how we regularly audit our teachers based on test scores that their students take. So, I just thought it was a funny parallel to think about doing that to our police officers and firefighters and, you know, emergency room staff. And it's insane to think about what we're asking being too big a task or unsavory. I mean, we could possibly, you know, implement the Danielson model to our police department, and I don't think that anyone would want to do that, but.
I mean, they would say that they already have something like that. They were very, the officer who attended the meeting was very insistent that they monitor themselves internally, you know, very strictly, and that when they see an incident happen, you know, they step right up and talk about it.
Well, this is exactly why I don't lose weight on Weight Watchers.
Well, right, exactly.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, right, right.
You don't do that internally.
Yeah, yeah.
You are accountable to others outside.
Transparency, yeah.
And transparency, you know, that's not how it works, so.
Right, and your boss evaluating you is not the same as someone evaluating the entire department and the systems that are in place, which no one officer is accountable for. So, yeah, no, I think, it could be a lot worse. It could be the Danielson model.
Let's scare them.
Yeah, let's.
All right. All right, thank you guys very much. Mark, do you want to let us know about Board of Health?
Yes, so the Board of Health met early, early in the month, before, before our first meeting, and I don't remember the exact date. A lot of discussion on the topic that Scott talked about tonight, which is the, the health curriculum, the sex ed curriculum in the high school, and also the teen prep, teen pep program, which has gathered a lot of steam there. And they even passed a motion to the Board of Education endorsing teen pep, which I think Scott has a copy of, which should have been, they asked me, and it should have been addressed as well to the Board of Ed. And it's very polite and very good, and I thank them. They've come up with a lot of good ideas and good suggestions. So, it was a good meeting, and that was what they talked about in regard to the schools.
Okay, thank you very much, Mark. Rob, you have anything for us from the friends at the Green Team?
May 14th is the next meeting.
Okay.
And I think that'll be the opportunity for everyone to say where they're at in terms of getting their certifications and/or putting their grant proposals together. So, it'll be an interesting meeting, because the last one was about two months ago, I think. So, it'd be a good kind of time for everyone to catch up on where they're at and what actions they've taken.
Okay, so we will look forward to your report after the May 14th meeting. Oh, me. Delegates in New Jersey School Boards Association, so frustrated, like doesn't even begin to cover it. So, we, we submitted our resolution to the delegate assembly, and it's been rejected. So, I, I appeared last, not this past Saturday, the Saturday before was the resolution subcommittee meeting. I wasn't able to attend in person because I had a kid activity that day in a completely different town, not in Trenton. So, I appeared on the telephone and, you know, made our case as best as I could. The, the legal staff at New Jersey School Boards Association recommended that our resolution not go forward to the delegates. They tried to claim that there was already policy that covered our policy, which I made my case that it was not covered in their policy.
Is true.
It felt a little bit like that at times.
Sounds like.
And it was, it was kind of a fascinating process. I mean, I've gotten pushback from them before on resolutions, but not to this extent and not to this, like throw up their hands, kind of, we can't do anything about this. So, you know, if you guys remember, what we're trying to address is the fact that basically, you know, charter schools across the state are being allowed to operate as statewide entities, and they can pull kids from wherever they want, anywhere in the state, and then those districts are responsible to pay for those students. We were trying to make the point that that should not be the case, you know, that the district should not be responsible to send kids to charter schools everywhere and anywhere in the state. And New Jersey School Boards Association is saying that, basically, they're saying they can't do anything about that, but there's no, no legislative fix to that. What, I mean, it was, it was kind of mind-boggling, and the way their resolution subcommittee is made up is, you know, there are a lot of people on that resolution subcommittee that are pretty much directly beholden to the staff. You know, they're, they get their elected positions because they are in good graces with the staff, and they don't typically go against the staff. So, at, there were only 14 people present at the meeting that were able to vote, and the vote was eight to four. So, you know, the chair of the committee was the last one to vote and was the deciding vote, and, you know, he voted against the, the resolution, and, and that was that. So, we had plenty of people in the room who, you know, at least wanted to see it go forward to the delegates, and I did my best to make our case, you know, in this disconnected, I'm on the phone, they're all sitting in a room together kind of way. Felt like if I could have been there in purpose, in person, I might have been able to have more impact. But it was very frustrating, especially because literally as I was hanging up the phone, I could hear the government relations person, whose voice I know very well, going, "There's just nothing we can do," and then I heard. I'm like, can I say? Not with that attitude, you can't. So, it was frustrating. Sounds like. So, that's the state of our resolution. So, and then unfortunately, we can't bring anything back, because once you, once you bring a resolution on a particular topic, you can't then just try to reword it and send it back the next time. So, we're kind of worded, so, I don't know. Frustrating.
May I ask a question? Revealing my deep ignorance of how NJSPA actually works. I mean, NJSPA is an association of school board members, right?
It is an association of school board members.
Who are these people that are rejecting it? Are they, are they school board members from other state, other districts?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, it's, it's comprised of other school board members throughout the state. I think there's, you know, actually, I don't know if the resolution subcommittee has to have particular members from particular counties or not. Their executive board certainly does. Their executive board has, and there's an opening right now for Middlesex County on the executive board, and I, like, I have this real push-pull of like wanting to get more involved and then like, no, you'll want to strangle people, like, you know, like, I don't, because, you know, I think sometimes the answer is to have more people who are more vocal.
Yeah.
There, but then it's also like, it doesn't do any good to have a seat at a table where nobody is really going to listen to you, because they've made the decision before they walk in the room, you know, because then you just feel like you're beating your head against a wall.
Right.
So, that's what it feels like very often. And, you know, because I, I work on some of these issues nationally, I get to meet people who participate in other forums, you know, school board associations from other states, and they're not all like this, you know, like, and it's kind of funny. We had, a couple years ago, there was a school board member at Edison who put forward a resolution, and she wanted, she wanted Highland Park to adopt it as well, and I just couldn't bring myself to do it. But it was basically to, to stop funding school boards association. School boards, school boards association gets automatic dues. It's in our, it's in statute that districts have to pay school boards association dues, and it's a certain percentage based on your enrollment, based on whatever, and she was like, that's it, no more. Because a district like Edison has to pay, I mean, tens of thousands of dollars every year, and they feel like they don't get services commensurate with what they're forced to pay. In other states, there's no forced dues. Like, I've gotten to be very friendly with the executive director of Missouri School Boards Association. She's got to get districts to buy in. She's got to serve her district. She's got to be responsive to what they say their needs are. And in New Jersey, they really don't have to.
They don't do a shakedown.
Because they've got an automatic funding source. So, you know, I'm sort of coming, coming around more to that, you know, that like, you know, we should change something about that, but, you know, if I think this resolution's a heavy lift, I can't even imagine what a kind of a lift that would be to try to like, you know.
You'll find a horse head in your bed.
And I'm sure when they watch this video, they're going to be real thrilled to hear me.
What, I mean, but speaking of watching, so who are these school board members? I mean, do charter schools have school boards of a sort that can be?
Yes.
So, is it charter?
School boards have boards of trustees that are not elected, they're appointed.
Right.
And yes, the New Jersey, it is also by statute, the New Jersey School Boards Association represents charter school boards. But strangely enough, they represent school, they represent charter boards of trustees, but the boards of trustees are not part of the delegate assembly. So, there isn't that, I mean, so there's, there is an inherent conflict, but it's not a conflict where the charter schools are actually, I mean, they can go if they want to with their public meetings, anybody can go, but they don't have a vote at the delegate assembly, which is.
I just don't really understand this reluctance in that case. I mean, I get, is it, are these charter supporters? I mean, even if we can't do anything, we can lobby for legislative change.
With these kind of issues, it's impossible, sometimes it's impossible to tell what the resistance is and.
It's weird.
I don't know. And, and the next time I see the government relations person, I will certainly be like, what happened there? Like, what was that about? But it's, I wasn't feeling like I needed to like get on the phone and be like, eh.
Thank you for.
Next time I run into him, for sure, we will have a chat about that.
Wonderful.
I mean, they see me walk in the door and they all just kind of go, eh.
Rob, appreciate that, Darcy, thank you.
Next meeting is on Wednesday.
Oh, goodie.
And it's about the governor's budget and how it affects the school boards.
Oh, good grief, which is probably going to change anyway.
Yes, but we can talk about it.
Do we have to? It's so depressing. Okay, are you able to go on Wednesday?
Yes.
You are going, are you going?
I believe I am going.
All right. More power to you, my friend. I don't think I'm going.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so that's all of our liaison reports. I don't have anything specific under my president's report, but I did want to just kind of circle back to what we talked about last week and mention our forum again for tomorrow night and make a last pitch for anybody who might be watching now or tomorrow, because John's going to get this up so fast. I'm just kidding, John, I know you're not going to get this video up that quickly. But it is tomorrow night, 6:30 in the high school cafeteria. Come on, you probably have the title of it memorized better than I do. I don't have it in my.
I don't. I'll pull up the agenda.
Come on, come on.
Don't, don't forget that we'll be serving dinner.
Serving dinner, yes. So, we are, we are serving dinner. The HPEA has been gracious enough to, to provide dinner for us tomorrow night. There will be babysitting provided, so. No excuses. One babysitter provided. A babysitter. Only bring very. Ms. Morris is still trying to wrangle her NHS students. I know, because I can't babysit, because I'm planning on actually going, so, there you go.
And just a little inkling as to what we'll get into. First of all, the title is Increasing Security While Moving Forward to Implement Restorative Practices.
What he said.
Mr. Presti will be facilitating an open space dialogue. We've got four questions that are going to frame our focus, and they all have to do with how do we maintain security and safety while not compromising our forward move on in the area of restorative practices? Okay?
And we're going to have, Dr. Ann Gregory is going to be there as well?
She will, she's not going to present. We spoke earlier, but she'll be participating.
Okay. And, you know, I think this is, especially in light of what we were just talking about in terms of the, you know, issues going on in town, the conversations that are happening in the Human Relations Committee, conversations we've had at this board table about what is our relationship with Officer Joe, what does that look like, what do we want that to look like? We want to have that conversation in advance this time, not, not after, not after the person is already in, in the building. Before the person is in the building, let's get that community input, let's get that community feedback and find out what do we want this position to be, what can this position potentially be? So that we're being responsive to the requests that we're getting from, from staff to make sure that we have more of a presence in the building and somebody who can be there to help facilitate if we do get to the unfortunate point where we have students, you know, in the building going after each other, but we're not making this, somebody who reports directly to Officer Joe, and then that's, you know, that's the chain of command, and we're just, we're like feeding this, you know, this pipeline. So, so I'm very much looking forward to the conversation tomorrow night. If you're watching, please come. We really want as much, you know, student and staff and community input as we can, as we can get, so we, you know, we make this a really, a beneficial, a beneficial add, addition to our, to our staff and to, you know, the direction we're trying to move the district.
And just from a student perspective, I talked to Mr. Lassiter last Monday night. He has reached out to some students. I reached out also to Ms. Sinclair and Ms. Powell, who run the seat at our table. They told me they'd reached out to some students, and we've had announcements on the loudspeakers every day now for about half a week.
Oh, awesome.
So, hopefully, we'll have some, that's not a guarantee, but hopefully, we'll have some students out.
Wonderful. All right, that's it for me. Anybody have anything they want to talk about for old business?
I do have one item. It's miter, but it's kind of exciting. So, John Hume and I have been texting each other quite a bit. He, the documentary Blacked Out has been accepted into four film festivals now. Montclair, Hope Oakland, Harlem, that's the latest, and Vero Beach, Florida.
My, we're getting around. That's very exciting. Congratulations to the students and to John. That is very cool. All right, anybody? You've been shot, yep?
Yeah, I went to the book club that was co-sponsored by HP Posack and the Human Yeah, I went to the book club that was cosponsored by H.P. Posack and the Human Relations Committee. And the book was White Rage, which we talked about adding to the high school book list, and Ms. Fedipaldi is going to do that. But in the discussion that we had, it came up that there is something called the Amistad Act that is on the books and has been on the books since 2002 that apparently no one knows about in New Jersey. It's a mandatory inclusive curriculum for history, social studies, and language arts that includes African-American history in American history. So this program was, or this act was passed by the legislature but was defunded. Yeah, so we heard about it at this, this book club Monique and I attended, and we've been talking about it with our administrators, Dr. Taylor, and today during our tours, I got to talk about it with some of the teachers. And two teachers at Bartle who run the after-school book club, they had never heard about it either. So many, many people who have master's degrees and, you know, are educators and have never heard of this. And so we got the ball rolling with, complying with the Amistad Act. And it will be quite a process, but I just wanted to bring that up publicly so that we can all be aware of that. And if you want more information, just Google "Amistad Act," and you will be shocked that this passed in 2002 and that none of us have ever heard of this. But it is a mandatory curriculum. It's an interactive curriculum, and there are, you know, plenty of communities and districts that are out of compliance. So helping to spread the word about this curriculum is one, one way to effect some change, but to also make sure that, you know, us as a board take a good look at this. So I hope you get a chance to look at it.
Is this something that we're going to try to work into our curriculum moving forward?
Absolutely.
Is, are we going to commit to doing that? That's great. Okay.
Quick point, though. I don't know if the curriculum is mandatory or the curriculum's suggested. What's mandatory is that there is an infusion of African-Americans' role to the history of this country in the humanities. But what curriculum you choose to do that with is, I think, left up to the district discretion.
Yeah, I misspoke.
Yeah, okay, just making sure.
Yeah, the mandate is to include African-American history into the curriculum.
And there is a recommended, yeah, there's a really good resource available.
Yeah, it's really rich. It's, you know, reading in book lists for all grade levels. It's all kinds of social studies lessons. And I wouldn't be surprised if lots of our, you know, educators, through no fault of their own, have no idea about this, this history.
Yeah, and I think what has happened in some, in, in school districts who, whose administrators are aware, they kind of quietly infuse it without really publicizing it as we are here, like, "Hey, this is something we should be doing. It's mandatory. It's kind of quietly done, and we didn't, like, okay, we've covered that, but we don't really talk about it." So it's just interesting to see the response or lack thereof.
Yeah, very interesting. And I, I do hope that, you know, now that we know about it, we do better, right?
Yeah.
That's the plan.
Sounds good. Okay, if nobody has anything else for old business, Scott, you have something on there for new business?
Yeah, be very brief. I just wanted to give everybody a heads up as to what administration and the secretaries in district are thinking of doing this year for registration. You recall, we, we agreed as a board and the district, we wanted to, to try to be less invasive when going through this process again than we were last year. So this is what we're thinking. Any comments? Feel free. We'll send a letter home to all the families and guardians in the entire district at the end of the school year, a closing letter of some kind I'll write. Any return envelopes that we get because of bad addresses, people have moved, maybe they didn't update their information, we would then follow up with by sending out another letter. That would be one step of the process, which we, I think we should engage in every year. We're finding that that's usually a flag, by the way, that somebody may no longer live in, in our community but could potentially have a child in the school district. We get something back, snail mail. Remember, we don't send a lot of snail mail out anymore. So to do a mass mailing would be a special event, be something which we don't do often. The second thing I'd like to propose we do is compensate a few of our secretaries to audit the even grades. Since last year, we had the odd grade parents and guardians come in and present documents. This year, have a couple of secretaries, paid hourly, to go through the files of grades, two, four, six, eight, and 10 students, to verify that we have all their information, we don't have expired leases, everything's up to date, as opposed to requiring everybody to come out. We would save money, likely, because remember, we hired nine secretaries last year to spend six hours over two days to, to do this work, and we required a lot of parents to come out and ended up still doing a lot of legwork over the summer. We had a couple of hundred folks, if you recall, who just didn't come out. So we feel like we can not only be more efficient but save money by going through this process. Mr. Roswitz?
If we did odd grades last year, wouldn't we do odd grades again? Because if we did even grades this year, wouldn't we be doing the same students?
Good point.
Yes, good point.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Check that, odd grades. Any thoughts, concerns?
Expired leases, I mean, I assume that anybody, like, who is, you know, in the higher grades is going to have an expired lease, any renter. I mean, is that, is that actually one of the details we'll be looking for? Expiration dates of leases? I'm just, I'm questioning whether looking for expired leases in student records will, will give us much information, given how long it will take to look, because anybody who rents and registered in kindergarten, the lease the school district has will now be expired. I'm not sure that's going to catch many people that might be of interest. Does that make sense?
Something to consider. I, I don't know.
I mean, I just, if you're, if you're above kindergarten and you're registered in kindergarten, we can pretty much guarantee that the lease the district has is not current. They're annual leases typically. So I, that seems like a lot of manpower for that one particular inquiry, but I'm sure you'll be tweaking the...
Well, so Ms. Hope was asking if people are supposed to provide a new lease every year.
No.
If it's an expired lease, we should be, I think we should be verifying that the lease is current. What if we get a family who is living outside of town?
We'll know that from the first action of getting the letter back.
Right. I mean, looking for, nobody, are we, are we suggesting that, like, on an annual basis, we tell people to come in with their new leases?
I think we agreed that it would be helpful to do registration on an annual basis.
Oh, did we? Okay.
Am I misunderstanding?
Maybe I'm misremembering. I don't remember the period. I knew we were going to do it periodically, but...
We were going to do it periodically. I know, I, it took a while, but I finally got to the point where I was not happy with the way it was done last year.
Right, right.
So we, Scott's been working on doing it more so with, with packets that could be, you know, sent directly to the home and then brought in by the students to, or sent, mailed in, you know. So I, I think it's a little more responsive to my concerns that I had last year.
But, but this current idea doesn't require the parents to do anything, which is, I think is very good.
Which is great, yeah.
You get a letter back, you know, undeliverable. You have, then you have an inkling. We get 100 of those back, then we can pursue those by sending it certified next time. And then, you know, you whittle it down to the point where you need to then really check, which is what happened in the one case, which would have cost the district, you know, a million dollars over, over the child who, that someone was trying to register from out of district, you know, over 10 or 12 years. And then the second part, I hadn't thought about the lease, but I think, I think, you know, Anne's right. The lease is going to expire. Just looking for unfilled, unfilled data, you know, we only have one piece of information or two pieces of information, that might tell us a lot more.
Yeah, that might, yeah.
That might tell us a lot more, that they got one thing in and, and don't have anything else. And then those 50 people or 100 people, then you ask those people to fill in more information. And that, that's much less invasive to people, you know, to have to come in, you know, to have everyone have to come in is, is definitely a burden for the families.
This is all on paper?
Correct. But I, I like both ideas. Minus, I think, checking leases, I like both ideas a lot.
Like, if we're going to do it every year.
Much less invasive.
I, I do, too. I guess if we're going to do it every year, then the leases would be relevant.
Yeah.
I didn't realize we were doing it on an annual basis. I withdraw my concern, I guess. I don't know.
Am I the only one who feels like it, we're going to have secretaries spinning their wheels?
This was their idea, matter of fact. I had a meeting with them last week. They thought it was more productive at their time. They're going to be using it, then coming out for the six hours we had them come out. Which part do you think would be spinning the wheels? Setting out follow-up letters when we get returned mail?
No, I think that's fine. I mean, I guess I just, is something always going to be returned? I mean, I feel like I still get mail for the people who used to live in my house.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, like, I don't know that just because you don't get a letter back means that the person still lives there.
No, you're right.
No, maybe somebody didn't investigate it.
But there's always that chance that we'll have a few families who are skirting the law and...
I know. I mean, I guess I'm just, to me, it doesn't sound as effective. It just, it sounds like we wouldn't...
That what we did last year.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I personally didn't feel like it was that massive of a burden to ask people to do this. I mean, Rob, I know you and I disagreed on this, but you're getting a, a free public education. I mean, I don't think it's a big burden to ask people to say, you know, prove every couple of years that they live here. I don't think that's a lot to ask.
The problem that I saw wasn't the burden. It was rather that we got some number of people that we never heard back from, I think.
Right.
And then kind of nothing happened. You know, we didn't, we didn't hire detectives to go after every one of them, because there were a lot that just, we got nothing, we got nothing from. And maybe that's the same problem here, but it was kind of...
I think you would be magnifying that problem, because you'd have so many people that you wouldn't even...
Yeah, that may be true.
You know, I mean, I think if you're doing this consistently, that number, I think, would be whittled down. I mean, to me, this just feels like we're kind of throwing our hands up, like, meh, you know, like...
But can...
And I mean, I think it was productive. I mean, yes, there were ones that, certain ones that we never heard from, but there was, I think, certain ones we never heard from, and then we also didn't see the kids, you know, I mean...
Maybe.
I think we can all agree that it's important for us to be able to verify people's residency. And I think we just have to agree on, on what the, the best method is. And, I mean, I, I don't know why we wouldn't consider putting, setting up a, a spot on our site where people could, could actually, yeah, because, I mean...
Could we maybe look at this in finance? I mean, this would, I mean, to me, this falls under us.
Yeah, we can look at this.
I mean, this would, this would fall under finance and facilities, you know.
I'll send myself a...
We just got done with budget stuff. We feel like we've got a, we've got so much time on our hands.
I'll put it on the agenda.
I mean, I'd be happy to sit down with you and Linda and maybe a secretary or two or something and do a little bit of research and see how other, I just, I feel like just having the secretaries go over files and sending out a letter.
I mean, this is an area that I don't have a strong opinion. And to be frank with you, I've got other fish to fry right now. But I just want to make sure we do it in a timely fashion. If we want to do it this year, we don't want to let go past late May.
Right, yeah, okay.
So maybe our next finance committee meeting could involve discussion about that.
Yeah, or we could probably even set up something in between.
I'll, I'll put it on the agenda for us to at least discuss it.
Right.
And on May, I think it's May 7.
Okay.
Good stuff.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Excellent. All right. Well, we have no public, and so, if no one, I'm sorry, no one else has anything for new business? No? No, no, no? Okay. So we have no public for public comment, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.